All right. Oh, we are live. Welcome, welcome. This is the Waxahaw Town Board of Commissioners meeting. On this, the twenty-third day of July, the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-four, we'll call this meeting to order. We'll go ahead and invite everybody for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence to give thanks and praise. Alrighty, that officially gets things kicked off. Let's see here, could I get a motion to adopt tonight's? Or let me ask first if we have any amendments or updates to the agenda. Hearing done, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as written?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. Next up, we have general public comments. We have one person who has signed up for general public comments. You have three minutes. You are asked to keep it civil and polite, speak to the board as a whole, and remember, this is an official public hearing. So will Jeff Correll please come up? Carroll? Sorry, Mr. Carroll. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your comments, thank you. That concludes public comment session. Next up, we will go to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion is approved. Next up tonight, we have a recognition by one Ms. Lisa Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I am delighted to take this opportunity to recognize and celebrate Blair Israel and his five-year anniversary with the Town of Waxahaw. Blair's journey began with us in two thousand and eighteen when he initially joined as a consultant while working for Centralina Council of Government, where he had an impressive sixteen-year tenure. Prior to that, he missed twelve years of experience in private practice. His passion for our town quickly became evident. Just after a few months as a consultant, he decided to join the team full-time. Over the last five years, Blair has made several invaluable contributions to our team. One of his most notable achievements was leading us through the comprehensive plan adoption. Blair spearheaded this extensive year-and-a-half process, managing public engagement, designing the maps, creating narrative. His leadership and expertise were instrumental in our success. Blair is a talented designer and landscape architect, as well as an exceptional communicator. Whether he's presenting at a meeting or rallying the team, his skills shine through and inspire those around him. We deeply appreciate Blair's loyalty and the unique strengths that he brings to our organization. So Blair, thank you for your dedicated service, and I look forward to many more years together.
They gave me that plaque. I had no idea what she was gonna say. I want to take just, I want to take this opportunity to say a few words, if I may. So I'd like to thank management, I'd like to thank our human resources department, fellow planning staff, staff from every department for being part of what makes Town of Waxahaw an exemplary place to work. And I'd say they're almost like family, except that you do get to leave them at the end of the day, so. But the coordination and camaraderie here I found to be unmatched in my career experience. Some of you, some here know that my Waxahaw experience actually started back in two thousand and ten as a consultant when I was developing the Waxahaw pedestrian plan at that time, what was adopted as the two thousand and twelve. So I appreciate the changes this area has seen in that time. It was also a very different working environment, though, as well. The one staff member, I remember, the one staff member who I really was able to work well with, I could really appreciate, they, they left while I was doing the project because of negative working conditions. But what we have now is, is very different, very different than from that environment. And that's no accident. That, that is a product of smart management, confidence from elected officials, and a high level of commitment from fellow staff. So I appreciate how I and I, I think most of the staff are encouraged here to exercise our individual talents in order to make a great team. I hope that as a team, we have shown that we believe in what we're doing for the, for the benefit of the town. For planning staff, that means striking a very delicate balance between serving individual property owners and their rights and their legacy, while looking out for the welfare, welfare of the town as a whole. I'm truly thankful to be a part of that effort here and look forward to continuing, maybe until I get my next plaque, who knows? But thank you very much for the privilege of being here. Thank you, Blair. Thank you for five wonderful years and then some.
If you've ever gone to a conference with Blair, it's an experience. He's a, he's a rock star. People love him.
Well-known in the industry, I take it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Well, that's where you make your name, at the conventions. Alrighty, next up, we have a presentation, Mr. James Kelly.
This presentation will center around a couple of different alternatives on the Waxahaw Parkway. This, again, focusing on the Waxahaw Parkway East. This just sort of continues some of the conversations from our last meeting around alternatives to the existing alignment.
That's correct. So this is just a follow-up from our last meeting. Per request, we were asked to look into some more alternatives. So a lot of this information upfront, you'll see is... Here we go. A lot of this information is just recap from the last meeting, so same information we're not going to cover as in detail as last time. I'm just gonna skip right to the, the new information. There's some more highlights on the OD study, amendments, process, et cetera, multi-jurisdictional area. Noting that, basically, the, the gist is, which line is better? Do you like the red line or do you like the blue line? Why or why not? And then straight into the overview of the, on new alternatives. So we looked at alternative seven A and seven B. The first is seven A, which is Waxahaw Indian Trail to Pleasant Grove and ultimately to McNeely and Collins. As you can see, this is a long route. In this particular diagram here, there are impacts to the Waxahaw Bible Church. There are also several, several impacts to property owners as well. So some pros and cons from this. Pros: utilizes existing roadways and right-of-ways. There's no impacts to the historical district, so there's some pros. Cons: eighty-plus privately-owned parcels impacted, long detour, four miles versus less than two miles for Northeast Parkway. The connection, again, is, ten C seventy-five is further away from downtown and will not meet the intent of the OD study. There's definite speed limit concerns for an NC Route network vision. You're still not addressing the at-grade railroad conflicts that we have, multiple stream crossing and FEMA floodplain impacts, multiple intersection improvements and realignments, and most of the footprint is still outside of Town of Waxahaw limits, so there's multiple jurisdiction coordination there. In addition, you know, you're gonna have significant traffic added to these quieter neighborhood type roads. And then, of course, you have the impacts to Waxahaw Bible Church. So just some feedback from the board. Any feedback or comments to offer on this alternative before we move into alternative seven B?
I guess when I came up with this idea from looking at the map, I guess my intention was not really to make this a parkway. It was really to give an alternate route for people in the short term. So this isn't, you know, was not my intention for a long-term solution. It was a short-term solution so that we can alleviate the traffic before the thirty or forty years, whatever the route would be. And in that case, if the roads didn't have to be widened, would then eighty homes be impacted? If it were just to Waxahaw Indian Trail Road and let people go where they may.
To meet the speed limit requirements and turning radiuses, everything of those heavier truck vehicles, yes, there would still be impacts to properties.
What if it wasn't like a, a truck route? What if the truck route was only on the west?
So in this case, unfortunately, you know, those are, those are state-maintained roadways. So granted, they're not NC routes, so you don't necessarily have to design to the WB sixty-two FL, that's specific to NC Route designation. Still, the state is going to require you to accommodate for those heavier vehicles. Thank you. So we'll do the next one. Alright, moving on to alternative seven B, which is just an alter, alteration of alternative seven A. Waxahaw Indian Trail Road to Pleasant Grove and then all the way, all the way to Potter Road. Again, you'll see, you'll see impacts to the same intersection there with Waxahaw Bible Church. Continuing east, you start to run into, you know, if you're native to this area, which I am, you know, you start to run into impacts to the Pleasant Grove Campground. And that campground has been around for decades. And then adjacent to the campground is the cemetery, so you also run into cemetery impacts there with that, with that route. So pros and cons. Pros: utilizes existing roadways and right-of-ways. There's no impacts to the historic district. Cons: over a hundred and fifty-plus privately-owned parcels impacted. It's a significant long detour, it's the longest one that we've seen thus far, six point five miles versus two miles for the Northeast Parkway. Again, you're not meeting the intent of the OD study because that connection is further away from downtown. Again, speed limit concerns for NC Route vision, at-grade railroad conflicts still remain, multiple stream crossings and FEMA floodplain impacts. And then, of course, multiple intersection improvements and realignments that are, will be necessary to accommodate this portion of traffic. Most of the proposed footprint is still outside of Waxahaw limits, so there's multi-jurisdictional conflicts there as well, or coordination, rather. Significant traffic is added to these neighborhood-type facilities, these neighborhood-type roads. Impacts to the Waxahaw Bible Church, and of course, impacts to Pleasant Grove Campground and Cemetery. So thoughts on this alternative?
Questions, comments? Well, thank you very much for that. And just a further update with this whole topic that's been going back and forth a little bit is, we do have some meetings that are currently on the table and being planned with CARPO. So we are reaching out to both CARPO, the executive board, as well as the staff to engage and get a meeting with all the various stakeholders, both from the region and at CARPO itself, to discuss these alternatives and to come up with a plan that we can present to the board. We'll see what comes out of those conversations. It will be sort of a multi-jurisdictional conversation with Mineral Springs, the county, as well as the CARPO board. Hopefully, we'll get something out of those, and we'll have a plan moving forward that people can agree with, the rest of the region can get behind. Thank you very much.
So I have a question. So these alternatives that you presented at the last meeting and today, were, were these things that you worked on, or did we have to hire Kim Lee Horn to work on this? Where did, what, who, who did these alternatives?
So we hired a consultant, Kim Lee Horn, to assist with the conceptual layouts.
Okay. And how much, do you know what the cost was for this work to be done?
Approximately twenty thousand.
And how, so I wasn't aware of this ask for this work to be done. So where did that direction come from?
So that direction really came from the board overall, who wanted to look at these alternatives in particular. That was a request from, from the board.
Does, yeah, I don't recall that.
No, it's something we were asking for when we found out that the existing, when we found out the existing alignment was rejected by the county.
It was one of those things that I discussed with James, and we discussed alternatives and how can we find alternatives and develop alternatives.
And that's when the idea was presented, to go to Kim Lee Horn and have them work on some alternatives as well.
So the idea then did not come from the board, but it came through discussion?
Not the board as a whole, no. It came from members of the board, including myself.
So when, and I don't know if I need to ask Jeff this question, but, or, Jeff's the only staff member here that can probably answer. This a dollar amount of twenty thousand, is that not something that the board would have to approve?
No, we had the money in the engineering budget due to professional services to cover it.
Okay, so this was all done by basically a request by the mayor to do this, is that? So all the money and time that has been spent for the past two years, we still felt the need to spend another twenty thousand?
Well, I mean, we're at a point where we were dead in the water with the county refusing to approve the existing alignment. So it was a way, or it is a way of maybe to get things to move forward a little bit.
So is the county gonna reimburse the town for the twenty thousand that we've had to spend because they won't cooperate?
I haven't asked.
Well, I hope all of the taxpayers of Waxahaw have heard this.
I don't think that the twenty thousand was something that was presented to the mayor and that he said, yeah, go ahead and spend twenty thousand dollars.
I asked if it was in the budget, if this was something we could do, and the answer was, yes, that's in the budget. It's something we can do.
If staff thought it was a call for it, but they would have said no, right?
But I wonder if there's something that the town could have used that twenty thousand, twenty thousand on for something else, rather than something that has been worked on for two years?
I, I understand that this has been worked on for a long time, but again, I felt it was dead in the water and that something had to be done to get it to move forward and developing alternatives. Because again, a lot of the reasons and a lot of the rationale for pulling it off of the CIP was because, or the CTP, was because they felt other alternatives were more effective. And so...
They who?
They who is in the county, as well as Mineral Springs.
Okay, but it cannot be pulled off of the CIP or the CTP. It can't, it's, it can't, it can't be pulled off unless there really is a viable alternative. So when you say pulled off, they cannot pull it off.
But they did. They, they voted not to support it.
They voted not to support is different than them being able to pull it off. They cannot pull it off.
But getting county support was seen as instrumental in getting it to move forward at CARPO. So we wouldn't be able to get this to move forward or to proceed with CARPO if we didn't have the multi-jurisdictional support. And it was obvious from that standpoint...
That is not totally true.
Well...
That is not totally true.
I'm not the one who decides the priority at the CARPO project level.
You're not, but...
But I know that they generally favor projects that have multi-jurisdictional support.
Correct, but multi-jurisdictional support can also come from other members who are on CARPO that do not include the county if it is a regional position and a regional problem that needs to be addressed. So that is not entirely correct.
James, you're the expert, right? You, you've dealt with NC DOT and CARPO. And the last meeting, I think I asked you, what were the chances of getting this done without the county and Mineral Springs? And I think you said it would be difficult, and we couldn't really go it alone without them. Is that, do I remember that correctly?
So specifics are without Union County or Mineral Springs support. Since the line is within their jurisdiction, if they were to oppose the line at a CR two PO board meeting, it would get to a three-quarter majority vote at CR two PO on whether to adopt the new alignment. There is no recommendation to remove the alignment because they would have to restart that process.
So therefore, it would require a three-quarters vote from that board, which in fact does not mean that it cannot be done because three-quarters of that board, if they do vote in favor of this regional transportation project, it can be done.
That's correct. With that said, you know, the three-quarter majority vote, it can be difficult to obtain without advocacy.
And that accounts for about thirty-three percent of the cost, right? If they approve it?
I'm sorry, could you clarify the question?
When CARPO approves, it's about thirty-three percent that they send on to...
Of what they're funding, yeah.
What the funding would be.
For the CTP, uh, CARPO doesn't approve any money for the CTP.
No, and, wh- when this gets approved? And what monies would we get?
So that would depend on various, so if you're talking about Waxaw Parkway East is too early in that process to determine, so you would have to first prove that the project is fiscally constrained and move toward the MTP and then ultimately to the, the TIP. Um, if you're referring to Parkway West, there's a local match, uh, local match department there.
Right, but Parkway East, we have no idea.
Depends upon the grant. So if you, if you're awarded a grant, um, granted with CRTPO, you're not gonna get the DA because Parkway East value, total value would exceed the threshold. Um, because each product is supposed to get to twenty-five percent of the overall available funds that year. So for example, you know, there's only forty million available this year. They recently approved seven point nine million, so now you're down to about thirty-two million, give or take. A project can only go up to twenty-five percent of that thirty-two million.
Right.
And the Parkway will exceed that. So you wouldn't be looking at a DA grant. Um, other federal type grants, you're looking at about an eighty, twenty percent match.
Gotcha. And then as far as funding, we know that NC DOT is not doing very well on that end, right? They're in the hole about what, for this region?
Yeah, so specifically, you know, there's different buckets, right? There's different buckets. So when you're looking at those buckets, that's specific to this STIP.
Yeah.
That's not specific to the MTP.
Correct.
So that's a whole different, that's a whole different bucket. Um, to answer your question though, yes, for the TIP, the STIP, this region, Region E, is approximately four hundred and seventy-one million dollars in deficit. And then you also add in the, the Division ten level, which is the local level projects, that's a hundred and eight million dollars in deficit. So total deficit, you're talking close to six hundred million dollars for this region and division. Now, with that said, that's only for the STIP projects. That does not apply to the MTP.
Correct.
It's a whole different bucket.
Okay. Top of the list.
But state legislature could address that.
That's correct. So the state legislature, uh, works with the STI legislation, which stands for Strategic Transportation Investment Legislation. And if there's advocacy there at the state legislature, right now, there doesn't seem to be. Granted, anything could change at the state legislature level. Um, with that said, though, the state legislature could, uh, resolve some legislation issues and/or funding issues if they chose to.
Right, so it would, it would, it would seem to me that I would rather be on the list than not on the list. So that when funding does get resolved through state legislative means, then at least you're on the list.
And that's a good point because really, again, we're looking at the MTP versus the TIP. MTP is a twenty, thirty-year process, so you wanna get on that list as soon as possible. So that way, you can ultimately move toward this STIP to get that project programmed, uh, toward construction. See, I think there's, um, there's something much higher level going on here. I think that it's unfortunate, but this, um, this Parkway has become a political issue. And, um, we need to, it's, it's not new, it's been around since, I, I think, what, nineteen ninety-two? Um, it's, right now, it's lines on a map, it'll continue to be lines on a map until DOT determines that, um, it, uh, goes beyond that into a next step. So, um, we really need to be thinking beyond ourselves because quite frankly, this Parkway will, beyond all of our terms, uh, will be long moved on after this. So, um, what is curious to me is that the town of Waxaw has spent a lot of time and energy on, um, polling the residents at, at events, online, through email, and consistently, uh, traffic mitigation ends up being the top of our CIP. And what I think we've learned over these past several weeks, months, from James, is that, um, this is truly a regional, regional issue, even beyond North Carolina, it's, we're impacted from South Carolina too. Uh, two out of three cars are passing through the town. And so to make statements such as Waxaw's unbridled growth is responsible for the need of a Parkway is, is, is not appropriate. Um, it, it seems odd that, not really, I suppose, that we're the ones, um, fighting for protecting the residents who live here in the town of Waxaw, who are directly impacted from the regional traffic. It's not just the town of Waxaw that's growing, it's all of the surrounding communities that are growing, uh, as well. Um, and, and they're all impacting the county as a whole. And so it's, it's troubling to me to hear, and I, I, I heard you say just a minute ago, um, Mary Murray, that you've got meetings and such set up with CRTPO. But it's troubling for me to hear from my contacts at CRTPO that yourself and Commissioner Don, they're lobbying against this Parkway.
And it's total nonsense.
Well, be careful, because...
It's been lobbying against the Parkway.
Be careful, because we have people that are gonna make public statements, that are members of the CRTPO, so be careful.
Go ahead, they, I mean, they'll be telling a lie.
If you're doing that, that's a, it's awful, that's against what this town wants and needs. And I understand that the county wants to make it a, a, a political issue, which is, which is wrong. This is a regional transportation issue.
I don't know who was claiming that we're at CARPO lobbying against the car, against the Parkway. I mean, last meeting, I sat there and I barely said anything to anybody, so if anyone's saying that to you, it's false.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see how that could possibly be true. There's been no negative statements uttered by me against the Parkway and a solution to the Parkway. And I've been actively working with members of CARPO and other members in the community, trying to figure out a solution to get things moving forward again.
So will you, will you publicly go on record saying that in fact you do support the Parkway East?
I support a solution to the Parkway East. So I don't know if it's this alignment, I don't know if it's a different alignment. That's why we did this and that's why we'll take this to CARPO and we'll discuss that with them to make sure that the current alignment, as it's currently proposed, is the best solution. If it's the best solution possible, then I support it. If there's another solution that we can get done, get done more cheaply, get done quicker, then I would support that.
And by the way, we need to correct the record from the last meeting because, uh, I believe it was alternate six that was presented as being from Mineral Springs?
That's not correct. It was, uh, Alternative two and Alternative four.
Alternative two.
And the statement, the statement used was that it was a sketch presented at a Mineral Springs Board meeting by people at that meeting. And that statement is accurate. The reason why we do not identify specific individuals in a public forum is because this could ultimately lead to a divisive rhetoric.
Right, but I just wanna make it clear to everybody though, who listened to the last meeting, that that alternate was not approved by the Mineral Springs Board.
So I have the transcript from that meeting, um, the April eleventh meeting, and you're more than happy to, I'm more than happy to give this to you. It provides who suggested what type of alternatives, and, um, it was actually Alternative seven A, which is the, um, Waxaw Indian Trail to Collins and McNeely, that was suggested.
Did you just say seven A?
That's correct.
But Commissioner Wedra said she just made that up by looking at a map.
I didn't, that's what you're saying.
But it, it came up in Mineral Springs?
It came up at an April eleventh meeting at Mineral Springs.
That's really odd.
Well, it's, it's, but I didn't, that, listen, it's a map. I could read a map and I take issue with you saying that. That is not true. What you're insinuating is an attack on my character and I will not have it.
Did it, it's, it's in the minutes.
It could be in the minutes, but I didn't have a conversation with anybody.
So there was, there was no relationship to Commissioner Wedra. In the minutes or transcript, it was just an idea proposed by one of the members of the Mineral Springs Board, and that's can be located on this transcript.
But you did identify, you did just say it was seven A.
Seven A, that's correct.
Isn't it correct that the Mineral Springs Board did not actually, as a whole, approve any particular alternate plan?
They did not approve, it was suggested.
Right, so you, I mean, it's, I'm not trying to get at you, I'm just trying to clear the record here that none of these alternates are the Mineral Springs alternate.
He didn't say they were.
That's how it was discussed in the last meeting.
He didn't say they were.
It was discussed as if they were.
That's how it was discussed in the last meeting, and Commissioner Westlake felt like she had to attack Mineral Springs about it, so I'm here to set the record straight and say it's not a Mineral Springs plan.
What did you just state?
The statement was that a sketch was presented at a Mineral Springs Board meeting by people at that meeting, and that's...
By residents.
People at that meeting.
Uh, not the board.
Didn't support, except people at that meeting.
And then the board was attacked in the last meeting.
But that, that didn't come from his statement, and if the board was addressed by Commissioner Westlake, that is different than it coming from his mouth because he did not say that.
Well, I'm just gonna say this, and this has nothing to do with you, James, Jeff and I had a great conversation once I was elected, once we were elected, and he talked about the staff possibly be, can, be in concern that there would be, uh, division on the board, and I didn't understand why. Well, now I do. Because if there was a division on the board prior and there's division on the board now, I would ask people to look back and think about what the common denominator is and who the common denominator is and make it clear that we weren't here. So if there was division then before us and now we're here and there's, there's division again, what's the common denominator?
Which board? Because there was no division on the previous board.
Nope, not that one.
Okay, or the pre, which, which board? And who was on the board? And how far back do you want to go on the board when you talk about division?
Well, you've been here, so you know.
Oh, I know who was on the board, and I have not been on the board ever since the board existed. But I know who was on the boards previously, so we can go back as far as fifteen, eighteen, almost twenty years, if you wanna talk about division on a board. And I wasn't on those boards either.
Right.
Okay, but I do have a question.
Please.
I do have a question. Okay. Commissioner Don, did you say that you supported the, um, alignment? What was I gonna ask you now? I wanna make sure I get it correct. Um, building the Parkway, do you support building the Parkway?
I support the mayor's efforts towards resolving the Parkway issue.
You support his efforts? That wasn't my question. Do you support the building of the Parkway?
I think the stretch that ends at Waxaw Indian Trail Road is a no-brainer, uh, and that would help a lot. Um, as for the rest of it, well, there's discussions to be had about it. It's a situation in flux.
Okay, so your support or non-support of the Parkway extends to what the alignment is or who is involved in it? What does your support involve?
Up till Waxaw Indian Trail Road, and then beyond that, there's more discussion that needs to be had.
Okay, so you did make a statement though, that you did not support the building of the Parkway without, um, Union County or Mineral Springs.
Well, they're key partners in the alignment that's currently on the map, so, uh, whether I support it or not is kind of immaterial because they're, 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 they're a necessary partner.
Yeah, but you, it is material because you are on the CRTPO.
I'm an alternate.
You're, but you're an alternate who is on the CRTPO. So are you working in support of what the majority of the board is asking for the Parkway because it is a regional issue? Or are you more concerned in addressing how Union County and Mineral Springs react to what happens with this Parkway?
I haven't made any comments at CARPO about the Waxaw Parkway.
That wasn't my question.
The goal here is...
What do you want?
I want you to answer the question.
No, I, I think we do need to move on.
And actually, no, 'cause I'm not finished.
Oh, you're not?
No. So I, uh, there's a post by Commissioner Don that has me concerned as well. And this is on actually a website that the three of you are part of. And in my opinion, this violates our code of ethics.
Is this about the Parkway?
Yes, it is actually because the, because the blog post is about the Parkway.
Thank you.
And what happened at the last meeting. So the blog post says, "On June twenty-fifth, the Board of Commissioners voted to send an insulting resolution to the Union County Board of Commissioners. The main purpose of this resolution was to complain about the B O C C's decision in April to remove the eastern spur of the Waxaw Parkway from its transportation plan." He continues, if you look on his website, "A caricature of this board, which I personally find insulting because we're not cartoon characters..."
Don't take this seriously, I mean, come on, that's ridiculous.
Well, you continue to do it on your, on your webpage. So you highlight words from the resolution, then you said, "This prompted an in-person response from the Vice Chair, Brian Helms, at the July ninth meeting of the Waxaw B O C." Which, by the way, when Commissioner Helms spoke, he said he was representing himself, not the B O C C. And then you included the clip from the meeting of those words, and then said, "Considering that the B O C C are a key partner in the eastern spur of the Parkway, it seems counterproductive to antagonize them in this way." Now, if I recall that April meeting of the county commissioners, it was Brian Helms who had horrible words to say about Waxaw, and I addressed that at our next meeting. So then for him to come here and say we're antagonizing him, I think is inaccurate. But I also think that this is a violation of our code of ethics, which states that, I'll make, make sure I have it correct, that the board members should feel free to assert policy positions and opinions without fear of reprisal from fellow board members or citizens, and to declare that a board member is behaving unethically because one disagrees with that board member on a question of policy, it is unfair, dishonest, irresponsible, and in itself unethical.
Well, that's what you're doing right now, isn't it?
No, I'm actually pointing out your behavior of what you put in print about something that this board passed, and then you...
I'm typically entitled to do that. If you don't like it, too bad.
So, so who do you represent? Do you represent Waxaw? Do you represent the county? Do you represent Mineral Springs? Because it's not clear to me that you are here working for Waxaw. It looks to me like you're working for Commissioner Brian Helms.
That is pretty funny.
And on that note...
By the way, he did not insult Waxaw. He criticized the decisions of previous boards. That's not an insult to Waxaw.
You don't, what he, his, his words, and I'm sure I have that here because I spoke about it at the, at our meeting in April, he specifically said that because of our, the decisions that Waxaw has made, he is not gonna approve the Parkway.
Right, well, he's talking obviously about the Waxaw Board. You shouldn't, uh, imply that every Waxaw resident should be insulted by what he said. That's ridiculous.
The Waxaw residents want the traffic to be relieved, and we, you know, we constantly see criticism that we're not doing anything for infrastructure with the growth, and yet here we are, trying to do something, and yet our own board members are not supporting that, as well as the county.
Well, we don't all have to think alike, okay? And that's why we're all individuals, we're all free to express our opinion. And I'm gonna continue to do so.
Well, this, this board, when we pass something, must speak as a board, one board.
Well, the purpose of this exercise was to develop alternatives, to show both the public as well as the, um, municipalities in the area, our neighbors, uh, that we are considering alternatives. And that's, that was the whole purpose of this, was to consider alternatives.
Right, but it's, what it's done is it's surfaced, um, unfortunate political issues, and so the Parkway has gone, become a, um, a political hot button.
It was political before I sat here.
I, I won't disagree with that. And it, it has been for a long time because, because it's unfortunate, but somebody is going to be inconvenienced as a result of the Parkway. It, it, it just, it has to. It's just the, the way it works. And, and to, to back up what, what Commissioner Westlake's saying, I mean, literally, the Vice Chairman of the Union County Board of Commissioners stood up here and told us, he told us, "To be clear, according to state law, the county does not have a duty to provide increased sewer capacity." And I'm, what? It was, you know, I, I've been thinking a lot about this and I, I know we're giving... He clearly stated that they have no legal obligation to...
I transcribed it and we deviated completely from roads and now we're in the sewers, so...
So if I could move on, that would be great. If I can finish, he continued on with exactly what Commissioner Westlick said, is that your resolution seeks to blame the county for Waxaw's failure to manage growth when we have said repeatedly for months, two out of three cars are passing through the town of Waxaw. It's a regional issue. This has clearly become a political issue, which is highly inappropriate. But that doesn't mean just because most of the traffic comes from outside, doesn't mean that there's no impact to the unbridled growth that occurs here in Waxaw. That still has a negative impact.
I don't even understand the words you just said.
Approving Emerson causes more traffic within Waxaw. So if we're concerned about growth and traffic and all these things and we poll the residents, I would bet the residents didn't want Emerson.
But the problem still being is we're not talking about the growth within Waxaw as being the current problem of the traffic. The regional issue of the traffic is that over sixty-seven point five percent of cars are still passing through Waxaw. That has nothing to do with Emerson? That has nothing to do with Emerson? That has to do with the fact that they are going towards Mineral Springs, Monroe, Lancaster, South Carolina area. That's regional. That's not growth. That's regional. So whether or not Emerson is here, is not here, or any other development is here or is not here at this current time or even in the next five, ten years, that through traffic is still going to be through traffic and it's also going to increase in numbers because if and when N C D O T decides to move forward with widening sixteen, that's going to bring more traffic. That's going to bring more people passing through. That's going to bring more trucks passing through and that's going to bring more problems in the area here in Waxaw because it is still regional. So we've got to look at it as what it is, as being regional, not just something within Waxaw because the through traffic is regional. That's what it is and that's what it's been.
And there are two neighborhoods being built right now that are not in Waxaw on seventy-five. We have, what's it Waxaw Crossing, I think, which is actually Monroe.
It's Monroe.
On seventy-five. Then we have Roan Creek, which is on seventy-five, which are which is in the county. So there is growth that has been approved that is not from the town of Waxaw and those people are going to be driving through the downtown area. This is a regional traffic problem.
And we need regional partners to develop a solution.
To help clarify, you know, the town does have a T I A ordinance, so any developments that are approved within the town has to go through that ordinance if they exceed over one thousand vehicle trips per day or if there's any A M or P M peak hour thresholds met there. Now granted, remember, D O T's threshold is three thousand vehicles per day, so actually the town is more stringent in identifying those T I A requirements than D O T is. With that said, though, you know, any developments that are approved must mitigate for the trips if they add to the system and that's identified within the T I A ordinance.
Okay, I do have another question.
Oh, my gosh. Is it just one?
It's just one. It's a request, just like the request to have you look into alternatives. You know, this request will not cost any money. You know, it would just request some time and effort on your part. So my request...
Waiting for a question.
Excuse me?
Waiting for a question.
I'm coming. I'm getting to it.
Awesome.
So my request, after hearing all of this, okay, I'm going to back step, so please excuse me. But I'm going to ask a question. Even if all of this comes to fruition and it goes through and it's approved on a CRTPO, the current alignment may in fact not stay the current alignment. Is that correct?
Yes, so to help clarify that as well, so the current alignment is what we've shown in red, that dash red line.
Right.
So if you want me to back up?
No, no, don't back up. Okay.
That's the current alignment.
That's the current alignment.
And we've proposed to amend it.
Okay, we proposed the alternate alignment. That too may not be approved as the alternate alignment.
Correct.
But the approval would then be for it to remain on the CRTPO so it can take the next step further so that everything can be discussed and worked out.
So that's correct. So if the line is not adopted, the existing line will remain.
Correct. Okay. With that, now my request. Okay, my request would be that the Traffic Engineer and Engineering Department, along with staff consulting also with the Town Attorney's Guidance, draft a resolution in support of the CRTPO Comprehensive Transportation Plan for Northeast and Southeast quadrants of the Waxaw Parkway and to have that brought back to the board to present for discussion. That's my request.
Just to point a clarification, when would you like for that to be brought back to the board? Just however long it takes to draft the resolution?
Yes, and then you can let Jeff whoever know. Do we need to make a motion on that? Do we need to make a motion? Do we need to make a motion? Okay, I make a motion that the Traffic Engineer, Engineering Department and staff consulting with the Town Attorney's Guidance, draft a resolution in support of proceeding with the CRTPO Comprehensive Transportation Plan for the Northeast and Southeast quadrants of the Waxaw Parkway and bring that information back to the board, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes appear to have it. Oh, did we skip this?
It's already it's already...
They were named.
Yeah, it was already it's already taken care of. What is the resolution for?
To put something on the agenda.
Yes, but what to put what on the agenda?
To draft a resolution in support of...
Just want a resolution in support of Parkway East-South.
But isn't that wasn't that already approved by the previous board? Isn't that what we're dealing with? So I don't know that it's necessary, is my point. That's the plan that's already set.
So what what I heard is that the motion was to proceed with a draft resolution in support for the Northeast and Southeast Parkway explicitly to bring it to CRTPO.
Right, CRTPO to the board and then for CRTPO.
Okay, noted. I will note that that process, the remaining steps in that process are first you must proceed to T C C first before proceeding to CRTPO.
Okay. So you mean to make the formal request to the CRTPO?
Yes.
Okay.
Very well. Next up, we have new business. Mr. James Kelly, consider approvals of our asphalt contractor. This one should be simpler. This is for the asphalt repair contract that we have annually. Just a reminder that the board did approve a half million dollar budget each year for the next five years for this for this contract. So overall, this is the Waxaw 2024 contract bid award. Note that to provide some background, on July 16th, we went through the informal bid opening. I will clarify that, though. The informal bid opening, granted that this project had potential to exceed the $500,000 threshold from bids received, as well as since this is a very public facing project, we staff decided to move forward with the formal bid opening just in case those bids did come in over the $500,000 threshold. So we did advertise, we did formally advertise for the minimum of seven days. We did receive a minimum of three different bids for this. We actually received five total bids. So again, the purpose of this contract is for asphalt repair resurfacing, pavement preservation, et cetera. So the town received five bids with Troll Contracting coming in as the lowest responsible bidder at approximately $449,600. Town staff has reviewed the bids for completeness and recommend award of the contract to Troll Contracting. Some general locations of where this will impact and we will notify the impacted residences as well as HOAs ahead of the street paving operations by putting a mailer in their mailbox, notifying them ahead of ahead of the actual pavement work, saying, hey, please move your vehicle from the street. This road's about to be resurfaced. So we'll take those extra steps there. The lion's share of the work will go to Quellin. We have a lot of and this is all based upon our good roads analysis assessment. So we looked at the good roads analysis assessment to determine, you know, quantitatively where the worst roads in town are and then kind of spread the money out in accordance amongst a five-year plan. So this particular year, the focus will be Quellin. We do also have other areas in Cambly, Lindsay Meadows, Hillcrest and Wasaki Park and more locations as well that we are also going to seal on other roadways as well. So just a general note, again, that residents will be notified, they will be provided with a lot of notice beforehand before we begin, and they will be requested to please remove their vehicles from the street parking and move it into their driveway, as well as they will also be notified that there may be potential brief interruptions in driveway access. So just just show us a little bit of patience as we work through this project to make sure that we get your roads better. So next steps, the project has a floating availability date between July 29th, 2024 and August 12th. The contract period will extend sixty days after the start of the work. So if the board approves us moving forward this evening, then our next steps will be to have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor next week and then to get that ball in motion and to notify the residences. So upon execution, the contractor will be able to order materials and coordinate with their subcontractors. Completion date is set sixty days from selected floating availability date. Knock on wood, if everything goes well, we'll finish much sooner than that. Like I said, a pre-construction meeting will be held next week and important details of the project will be provided regularly to the B O C and to the public as well. So with that, I'm looking for a motion or any questions.
First, just out of my own curiosity, I noticed there was quite a big difference. I'm sure you guys did a great job, but you know, quite a big difference between the different bids, you know, like the highest bid and the lowest bid was like three hundred thousand difference. I was just out of curiosity, wondering, you know, what some of the differences are that you saw.
So we look at the first thing we look at is the engineer's estimate. So we estimated the project to be approximately $475,000 and then we look at the bids relative to that estimate. Now, I will say, you know, a lot of those higher bids have a lot to do with individual company overheads.
That's internal engineering estimates?
That's correct.
So our own staff kind of, it'll be about?
So we measured quantities, collected the data and all that and we drafted the the estimate, the engineer's estimate.
Okay, so we're coming into this bid process with an idea of what it should be.
That's correct. That's correct. So, you know, a lot of different companies, it really boils down to their general location relative to Waxaw as well as if they have any subcontracting and their, quite frankly, their general overhead. So a lot of the bigger companies like Blythe, Boggs, you see a lot of those companies on the interstate in particular, and that has a lot to do with their overhead because they have a lot of production. So you typically see in Waxaw a lot more of the local type companies. Granted, we did still receive some bids from those higher type companies and I think one of the bids was 729,000, if I recall correctly. That was the highest one that we received. Granted, you know, at some point, contractors will still put in a bid to see if they can get that price. At the end of the day, the person that was the contractor that was selected is the lowest responsible bidder.
And just to add one more point about the the lowest responsible bidder, that is by by state statute. Now, you do have some outs there. If there's a past quality issue or a past performance issue with that lowest bidder, you could pick the the next lowest bidder if you had something that you could you could point to directly of a of a past issue with that that contract.
Any other questions? Okay. Can I get a motion to award the Waxaw 2024 asphalt repair contract?
I'll make motion to award the Waxaw 2024 asphalt repair contract to Troll Contracting in the amount of $449,600 and authorize the town manager to execute the contract.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have consideration of the appointment for the Organization Advisory Board. Ms. Barbie Bruce.
Good evening. This time of year, it's the clerk's office advertises for volunteers for the advisory boards. And for that process, as part of that process, we have an organizational advisory board that oversees all the interviews, review of the applications, and then they recommend a slate of candidates for the board to consider for adoption. And again, as part of that process, we have chairs and vice chairs that are slated to serve on the O A B. And we have several seats where the chair or the vice chair, as terms are expiring, so therefore they're ineligible to serve on this board. So what you see in front of you is the spreadsheet of the boards that that sit as far as the O A B. The ones that are highlighted in blue are the ones are the seats that will need to be appointed. Their terms have expired and so they would not be eligible to serve in that capacity. So we've highlighted the ones in yellow in which that could would need to be appointed in order to serve as the O A B to begin that reviewing of the applications and doing the interview process and determining a slate of candidates to bring before you for adoption. Any questions?
Questions from the board? Nope. Thank you. Therefore, could I get a motion to adopt the O A B members? Do we have that coming up?
I'll make a motion to appoint Michael Evola, Brendan Tom, Sarah Claprot and John Gemignani to serve on the organizational advisory board.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Next up, we have Mr. Madison Miller. Let's see here, we have the first reading of a proposed change to the town code of ordinance.
Hello. How you guys doing? So I am before you tonight to present updates to our commercial vehicle standards and the town's code of ordinances. This is a request by your code enforcement staff to amend section 66 dash 21, which is our trucks, tractors, trailers, motor coaches and the like. So this amendment would update commercial vehicle exceptions and definitions. So for the change to our exceptions, so this is what would be allowed to be parked in a residential area. So if the vehicle is light or medium, weighing less than 14,000 pounds, primarily used to operate a power attachment or tool and is parked where the owner resides. So this would allow a resident who has this type of vehicle to have their vehicle parked at their house in their neighborhood. And with this commercial vehicle and this one specifically, may not be parked overnight on the public street.
And this, just to be clear, this does not overreach any HOA regulations and standards?
Correct. Yeah, often when a town has a regulation like this or something similar, the HOA typically has something more strict. So a lot of HOAs in this community prevent business logos or any kind of advertisement on their vehicle, either not allowing it or requiring them to be covered. So our definition change, starting with the bottom of the slide, this is what we are removing from our ordinance. So by this definition, any truck or van with any business logo or advertising is defined as a commercial vehicle by our ordinance. So we are removing that and then modifying number five. So a vehicle with more than two axles or with a gross weight of 14,000 pounds or more would be defined as a commercial vehicle now.
Can you give an example of like what 14,000 pounds? Do you have a picture of that or anything?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I have it on me, but so a, I guess by what the Federal Highway Administration considers, they... they classify it in eight class, eight classes of vehicles. So a small vehicle is a class one or class two. So a class one would be a minivan, an SUV, or a small pickup truck. A class two, so let me, let me backtrack a second. So the 14,000 pounds is a class three, is a top of a class three weight class. And so a class three is your heavy-duty pickup trucks, could be a small box truck or a small walk-in vehicle like what you see sometimes an Amazon delivery driver has. So anything from that size and smaller would be allowed in a residential area. So for another good example, a 3,500 pickup truck, you see them often as a work truck. We use them at the town capacity for public services and parks and rec. So that would be kind of your, a part of that class three side.
So I was just, the only confusion for me is, you know, we're striking the having, oh wait, was there some, the power attachment or tool?
Yes.
Operator, so what, so I guess my question is, so if there's, say, a landscape truck with a trailer with landscape equipment on it, a little backhoe or loader, in my constructing terms. So would that be considered more than two axles or more than 14,000 pounds, or how do you determine that?
Yeah, so each vehicle from the manufacturer has a gross vehicle weight assigned to it. So if the truck itself has more than two axles, then yes, that would be considered a commercial vehicle. Now for a front loader, I'm thinking of either like a Bobcat or there are these mid-size, the larger Kubota or John Deere tractor, tractors. Our ordinance covers that and prevents that from being in a residential area. So that's your bulldozers, any of the larger equipment like that is already covered. We're making this modification more so for, for the business owners who may have like a, an audio or a sound company, and they have a logo on their truck.
Right, right.
Or a, or a cleaning service, and they use a van. Because by now, by our ordinance now, it's pretty strict on what we interpret as a commercial vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
So code enforcement staff recommends the approval of these changes to allow residents greater flexibility when residing within town limits with a commercial vehicle. And so the requested action for August will be to approve these changes to the code ordinance. And this will be that motion in August, not right now. And then, that's it. Any questions, comments?
Questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much, Madison.
Awesome, thank you guys.
So we will move on to leadership reports. Jeff Wells, what you got?
Thank you, Mayor. Four things this evening, so you've heard me mention a time or two, the Cabarrus-Stanley Union County Hazard Mitigation Plan update. That is moving along as it usually does, very methodically. And all jurisdictions are working on updating that plan now. There is a section of the plan called the mitigation planned update that all jurisdictions are responsible for, and that's the process that we're doing now. It's just basically a spreadsheet of some different action items that we'll carry over, over the next five years. So we're working on that as a staff now. Eventually, this will come to the board once it's in final draft form, and that's the entire plan. It has to be approved by next summer. And the importance of the plan is that without endorsement from all the jurisdictions, and that jurisdiction's not eligible for some types of federal disaster recovery funds. So that's the importance of actually adopting the plan. But that's just an update on where we are there. Town campus is moving along very well. Furniture arrived yesterday and today. So had a whole army of people there assembling furniture today, and hopefully that will continue through the rest of the week. We've got carpet down in the office areas. Tile flooring starts next week in the lobby. Furniture arrives in PSPR in August, public services, Parks and Rec building. The parking lot is ready for the asphalt, but currently the weather is not cooperating. So we'll just have to wait out the rain, I think, before we get the asphalt down. Hopefully, hopefully next week. And then we'll also be working on, over the month of August, we'll be working on the corner slope there where Waxall Marvin and Kensington Drive make that turn. We're going to do some design changes there to make that more maintenance-friendly out there. So that's how that's, that's going now. Also, Friday, July 26th, we have music in the park from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Waxall Downtown Park. The performer is Ariel View, so look forward to that. And lastly, at your next meeting, you'll charge the Union County Tax Office with collecting taxes for Waxall for fiscal year 2025. Just wanted to give them a shout out. This past year, they collected 99.95% of the tax charge, which is an amazing number, so big thank you to their staff. That's all I have.
Alrighty, next up, we have Mr. James Kelly to talk about traffic.
So just giving you an update from our meeting with the Lawson HOA board regarding the Lawson Traffic Signal Proposal. Just want to stress the importance, before I get into some information or questions that you may have, stress the importance of the need for the Lawson HOA support in this particular area for right-of-way. Granted, it's Cuthbertson, it's a state-maintained road. Right-of-way acquisition would be acquired, and we would need some donation there from the HOA to essentially move the project forward. The NC DOT access requirements were for ride-in, ride-out at Borough Hall intersection and to, to obtain the traffic signal there at Lawson Drive. So we met with the Lawson HOA, staff met with Lawson HOA to determine whether or not they supported the project. And they came back and voted against granting right-of-way for the project, so there really is no point to move forward at this point. So our recommendation would be to reallocate funds to another traffic signal project that could achieve similar benefits, and that would be the Waxall Marvin and Pine Oak Road intersection. In particular, we could better align that intersection. There is a recorded fatality at that intersection, so there are also left-turn safety considerations to be had there. And so really, just the recommendation is, you know, unfortunately, at this time, it is Lawson HOA's board's decision. And if they don't wish to grant us the right-of-way, then it's better to move on to projects with less objection.
So just so that we have some talking points, if residents complain once school starts up again about the traffic there on Cuthbertson and why the town isn't doing anything about it. So is there anything, any reason that they decided they didn't want?
So the predominant reasons seem to be the conflict with the access restriction that was required, and really that was required as a requirement from DOT. So DOT wanted to limit the access to Borough Hall to ride-in, ride-out condition, essentially a median there, so where you can only make a ride-in and ride-out of the development. And then full movement at the, the intersection there of Lawson Drive. The concern was predominantly from the residents on the southern portion of the development, where they said that they would have to traverse Riverbank Road to get to Lawson Drive. And they were concerned about queuing issues. And it was made clear at that meeting, you know, you're not likely to encounter queuing, queuing issues. In fact, actually with the signal optimization, you're more likely to have a better outcome with the signal than without.
Yeah. Thank you.
Two more updates. So we are still moving forward with the Millbridge Traffic Signal. We did get support from their HOA to move forward. So we are moving to the design phase for that project. And then also, we've completed some work downtown along the, along Maxwell's there. You'll see some new curb and gutter. It may look a little bit odd just for a brief moment of time, and that's because it's designed in a way so that way when DOT comes in for their resurfacing project, NC 75 resurfacing, mid-August, that they can tie right in with the lip of the curb. And that's it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Ms. Lisa Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. Just a few updates. The Conservation Subdivision text has been drafted. It went to Planning Board last month and unanimously was recommended for approval. So those public hearing notices have gone out. That will be August 13th for public hearing, and then hopefully we can get a decision by the end of August. As far as developments, there's not much new to present from last month. We did have two new homes over the last month, so we're catching up with 2023, 14, we're now at seven. You'll actually see a reduction in some of these numbers. So for approximate number of units under review, that's in yellow, we're down to 862. Majority of that reduction is from the Duett. We removed that project off the developers' page. In green are number of units approved, 2,082. Reduction in number is the Amavi project. That's just south of, is that how it works? Adelina, they went from 136 units down to 93. And then the number in red are projects under construction. That number has stayed the same. We are working with Preserve on the Rehoboth Signal at 75, and working through right-of-way with Eastwood Homes for a left-hand turn lane from NC 16 on to Light Mill. So those two improvements should be coming in the next six to nine months. Here's the chart. Again, it shows those reductions for the Duett Artisan Amavi. And then I have been sitting back for, listening to the discussion on the Parkway. I know we beat it up to death, but I did want to mention how we utilize these alignments in planning and the more immediate need to solidify a route. As you know, the town does require developers to build roads or reserve right-of-way if their project is along this alignment. This specific alignment is from our Waxall 2040 plan. So if the alignment is on an adopted comprehensive plan or CTP or transportation plan, we are allowed to require the developers to build that or give right-of-way. Again, that's on the developers' expense, saving taxpayers' money, and NC DOT. But for me, I have some real-time decisions actually being made as we speak. For the southeast side, we have Rogers Pond. It's a buy-right development. They have a 100-foot right-of-way that we required from them. They'll build a two-lane road section going east-west. We also have Yarborough Farms in for review right now. It's another buy-right development. Again, we have the 100-foot right-of-way running east-west. But the real-time decision, you know, is like how, where this alignment crosses the railroad tracks and tees into 75. We have requested right-of-way from the developer. We still need to get this north-south segment. Additionally, up here in orange, we are talking to those property owners about a development. We can get the Parkway from NC 16 all the way to Waxall Indian Trail through those developments. But if it stops there, we're running all that traffic back downtown to get south. Same thing for Yarborough and Rogers Pond. Without this section connecting Waxall Indian Trail to 75, everyone's going back through downtown and up to NC 16. So these are real-time decisions, and they're, they're happening now. We just need to solidify using data on the best plan and alternative moving forward. So I look forward to your guys' decision so we can get this incorporated. Thank you.
Next up, Board of Commissioners comments. Any comments from the board?
I'll enter some comments in. And I'll read in one of, one of the sections from our resolution 2024-015. Whereas the recent actions of Union County Board of County Commissioners are another example in a long history of examples of delaying the implementation of crucial infrastructure investments by deferring needed road and utility investments, which will significantly burden future citizens and commissions. And I'll say, and I'll enter one more comment in, and I'll quote what Vice Chairman Commissioner Helm said. "To be clear, according to state law, the county does not have a duty to provide increased sewer capacity, which is materially false. They are working with a cert from the state to provide sewer and water, and if an increase is needed, they are legally required to provide that increase." And so, to me, we're, these, these thoughts and comments are irresponsible and are not forward-linked, forward-thinking with what benefits the region and the citizens of Waxall. Thanks.
Alrighty, anybody else? Very well, next we'll move into closed session. Can I get a motion to move into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A6 to review and approve closed session meeting minutes?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session. Can I get a motion to reconvene open session? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Jinx. All in favor? So moved, we are adjourned. Have a great night, folks.